It is 7:00 and I will call this meeting to order. And this is our budget adoption meeting. I'll start by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
John Berry.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Don Moselli.
Present.
Kelly Morrissey.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here. Okay, if we could stand, Councilman Dietzick has a prayer.
Your heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and her people. Amen.
Amen. If I can ask Vice Chair Moselli to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to councilperson communications. First item on the agenda underneath this is just a tobacco 21 update. As we're all aware, the council passed an ordinance raising the selling age for any tobacco product from 18 to 21. At the time, we were the fourth town in Connecticut. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I skipped over the minutes, so I just need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Were you, did you need to abstain? Were you, you, no? And one abstention? Okay. Yes, Mr. Ricchio wasn't here. Okay. So the minutes pass. Sorry about that. So getting back to what I was saying with tobacco 21, the council passed an ordinance raising the selling age for tobacco products from 18 to 21. We were the fourth town in Connecticut to pass such an ordinance, and since then, other towns have passed that. But I think it's important just to give an update. The police department has really done a fabulous job getting the message out to all the vendors, definitely working in cooperation with the STEPS Coalition. On May 6th, the police department and the STEPS Coalition completed the Tobacco 21 Merchant Awareness Initiative. They went to local businesses that were unable to attend two information sessions that they had. They tried to set up two different sessions so that any merchant that wanted to be aware could come out and hear a little bit more details about the ordinance. The purpose was to provide them with a copy of the ordinance, permit application, and signage regarding the new town ordinance, again, raising the age from 18 to 21. The merchants were able to ask questions about the new ordinance, so it was well received. And as we all know, the ordinance makes it a violation of any Southington resident under the age of 21 to purchase any type of tobacco-related product. Traditionally, these ordinances go into effect after a certain period of time. We did extend that amount of time beyond what's normally allowed in order to make sure the merchants were comfortable with the changes we proposed. So just wanted to give everyone an update on that, and again, as of May 6th, that was completed. So the microphone is open for any other councilperson communication.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Pulis.
I have a few items. First, I just wanted to take a moment to wish Vice Chair Moselli and Councilwoman Morrissey a Happy Mother's Day, along with all the mothers of Southington. Thank you for, you know.
Thank you.
It's great. We honor you. Secondly, on April 29th, I had the great pleasure of attending the Historical Society's annual Open House VIP event, which was great. It's always great to see members of the Historical Society, supporters of the Historical Society, take a look at the updated exhibits and the new acquisitions of the Historical Society. However, it was especially impressive, and I continually give updates to be able to go to the lower level with a member of the local media and show off the hard work that has been done to really refurbish that lower level. Since the last report, they've completely painted and sealed all the walls. The two industrial-grade dehumidifiers were installed that they independently raised money for and had professionally installed, along with the one that was donated by Mr. and Mrs. Ricchio. It's just bright and clean down there. The next step is the flooring, and they're really making that space quite a place. And finally, on May 2nd, I had the pleasure of attending the annual Empowered to Lead Symposium, which takes place annually at the Mohegan Sun Convention Center in Uncasville. And this is an event I'm involved in because the Connecticut Teacher of the Year Council organizes it. However, I was very, very pleased to see we had a team of 12 people from the Southington community attend. Now, just to give you a little background, the lead keynote there was Dr. Mark Brackett from Yale. He is the Director of the Center for Emotional Intelligence, and he has a statewide initiative to help teachers and parents and families and kids become more aware of emotions, social emotional learning. To go to one of his trainings, it's about $1,000 a day, and I just want to recognize Candace Patton, who's a former District Teacher of the Year from Southington semifinalist, who organized a team from Southington Public Schools to attend. We had teachers, we had principal, assistant principals, there were parents of students that were there as well, and negotiated a reduced rate. And this is the kind of innovation that I look, I applaud with our teachers, where they say, "Well, we could pay $1,000 a day to send our teachers to a training at Yale, or we can negotiate a rate, $100 per person, to send people to see the same speaker and then attend a bunch of other follow-up sessions by people in the field that are doing this good work." And so it was great to learn alongside Candy and all her other teaching and administrative colleagues and parents from Southington at that event. It was a great day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Moselli?
So first off, just an announcement that the Chamber of Commerce and Town of Southington Business Forum that we've all been waiting for is coming up on June 6th. That's a breakfast business forum. We will be meeting at Hawks. Registration is at 7:30. The presentation will start at 8:00. And we will have the Senior Vice President of Laz Parking as our speaker, and she will address best practices of communication within the workplace for the various generations, which I think is going to be interesting. It's unlike anything that we've done before. And I did have staff send to all of you information on that business forum because you do have to reserve your seats, and we have commenced marketing for that. The other thing is that two of our very unique businesses in town were cited in the most recent publication of Yankee Magazine in their Best of New England Summer Travel Guide, and that is our own Bradley Mountain Farm, and those are Annalisa's famous goats, which do goat yoga and goats in pajamas, and they are the, they've become the ambassadors for our town at so many of our municipal and community events. And also Kinsman Brewing Company was also cited. So again, in this magazine that has been around since the early 1900s and is very well thought of and respected, I just think it's awesome that we have two Southington companies noted in there. So destination locations. That's it.
Excellent. Any other councilperson communication?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that we did have the Diversity Commission meeting, and thank you, Mark, for chairing it. And we are starting to really look at a change of culture that is both challenging but very hopeful, and it is an opportunity to go through the process of exploration and discussion and looking at our town from the inside out. So it was very good.
Just one thing, just because you and I mentioned it there. So Vicki and I were both at that meeting, and Mr. Shoda, if we could work with Ms. Passamano, and I think she's here, the policies and procedures that were mentioned that we really don't have any clear set, we both agree that really needs to be a priority, so I'm hoping you can maybe assist her office in making that a priority?
May, Mr. Chairman, actually, Michelle and I have been working on that prior to this, obviously, this last meeting, and that has been our priority to make sure because we've had different areas that we've been working on, and it's probably been six months now that we're trying to finalize this last part. But it's good that we're working with the commission, or the committee now to finalize it.
Excellent. Okay, thank you both. Any other councilperson communication? Just a couple. I'm surprised someone else didn't mention it, but just a reminder, the Unico is hosting their gold medal award to Mr. Curtis Robertson. That will be this Wednesday, so congratulations to Mr. Robertson, who's been, Robinson, sorry, who's been a tremendous asset to our community. And also, we received our invitation for the annual Memorial Day Parade, which will be right before our next meeting. So that will be Monday, May 27th. The parade itself steps off at 10:30 a.m., and then, as usual, there will be a brief ceremony on the steps right next to 98 Main Street after the parade itself. So that is, once again, on Memorial Day, which is Monday, May 27th. Which leads me to just a reminder to all our residents, normally we do meet, that is a Monday when we normally meet, but because of the holiday, we will meet on Tuesday, May 28th. So our next meeting will be on a Tuesday rather than traditional Monday meetings. Okay, last call. Any other councilmen or communications? Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item four, which is action on all budgets. Before we do that, I have a very brief overview just to get us to where we are today, and then, of course, we'll take action and adopt, hopefully, all the budgets that are before us on the agenda this evening. So just again, to give an overview of the budget process leading up to tonight, you predicted it, Mr. Shoda.
That wasn't in order. But you might have played your work against it.
Yes.
The arrow.
Just the arrow?
It should be.
All right, enter.
Or enter. Enter, I'll try.
I tested it before the meeting, and it worked.
Say it again.
Refresh.
Working on here.
Oh, it's okay on the computer screen?
Working on here, but not there.
So maybe slide show from the begin, no, it's not projecting for anyone. Maybe start from the, where's Mr. Baker when we need him?
So if you hit Escape, it'll go out of the PowerPoint, and then you can go back in. Should anyways.
Hard to do that.
Mr. Lombardi, do you mind taking a look, just?
Take a look.
Sorry, everyone. We're experiencing technical difficulties.
Please hold.
Yes.
Is there an IT person in the house?
Not, well.
Is there a doctor on the plane?
So it's advancing?
No, you said it was just, had it going already?
But I didn't check it on the screen, so if I move this, it's advancing here, but why isn't it projecting?
Why don't you unplug and replug in to the projection screen? There you go. It's open down there. Just click the PowerPoint button. Scroll. Oh.
So will you talk about IT personnel in this budget presentation?
I think we got it.
Okay, let's see if it works.
No.
There we go. All right.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so just to get us started on the budget process, once again, this year, there was increased collaboration between all our elected boards, Board of Education, Board of Finance, Town Council. Committee of the Chairs continued. This was a standing item in January, February, March, as far as discussions between the town boards and putting together any information that needed to be presented for the budgets. We shared documents again this year, which allowed all members of the various boards to see the questions that our colleagues had of each other, and of course, there were budget workshops and public hearings throughout the process, all in the efforts to get, seek input from the public. I've mentioned this before, and Mr. Leary, I know has mentioned this as well, but this really is worth celebrating for the town. We increased our grant list by 1.49% this year, which is $59,579,478. And the reason that's important for our residents is this resulted in an additional $1.8 million in tax revenue. So that saved us from generating $1.8 million in tax revenue. It basically eases the burden on our residents. So again, this is really worth celebrating, thanks to our planning and development staff, economic development coordinator, and again, this is really beneficial for all our residents. Just to talk about some state mandates, these were items really pushed down from the state in one form or another to the municipality, and not just Southington, but all municipalities. First is related to the Town of Southington budget, MERS, which is the Municipal Employees' Retirement System. That was an additional expense of $603,000. That was included in the Town of Southington budget presented by the Town Manager, but again, this was pushed down from the state. Related to the Board of Education, there are municipal employees on the Board of Education side. That was $364,590. Again, from the state, not anything that the town necessarily was looking to do. This was added in the Board of Ed budget by the Board of Finance. And finally, also related to the Board of Education budget, teacher retirement, this was an additional $270,241. This is not included in the Board of Education budget percentages because this was, again, pushed down from the state. We're not exactly sure how they're going to do this yet, but it is not calculated in the overall percentage for that reason. So the Finance Director backed that number out before calculating the percentage increase required by the Board of Education, because again, that was not requested from the Board of Education. It was just more of a mandate that needed to be included in the budget. So as we move forward to the 1920 Town of Southington budget process, the Town Manager presented an operating budget, you can see the dollar amount there, which was a 2.4% increase. That did include the $603,000 increase in MERS that I mentioned in the previous screen. The Board of Finance then reduced the Town of Southington budget by $216,000 for self-insurance contribution, and also by $195,000 in the capital budget. That led us to a 1.61% increase for the Town of Southington General Government Operating Budget. That does include the $603,000 increase in MERS that I mentioned previously. So that's where we're at with the Town of Southington budget. The Board of Education budget, they requested, you can see the dollar amount, which was 4.58% increase. Again, we did not include the teacher retirement. The Finance Director took that out because they did not ask for that money. It was pushed really down from the state. The Board of Finance then recommended to us this evening a 3% increase, again, excluding that $270,241, but it does include the MERS increase added by the Board of Finance. So essentially, what does that mean for our residents? Because we get this question often, right now, as it stands, the way the Board of Finance passed the budget on to the council, if we approved it as is this evening, it would result in a .39 mil rate increase. So 1 mil is approximately $4,690,000. But what does that mean for a taxpayer? If your appraised value is $100,000 for your home, you're taxed at 70% of that assessment, so you can see that equates to $70,000. Your annual additional tax would be $27 if that was your assessment. It goes all the way up and it continue up to $400,000. Your 70% of that would be $280,000, which means your additional annual tax would be $109. Again, this is if we pass the budget as the Board of Finance recommended, which is .39 mil rate increase. Okay? So we'll leave it at that for now and open it up to the council for deliberations on the budget process itself.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we get into the discussion, can we just request that that presentation go on the town website?
Absolutely.
It would be helpful for residents to.
Definitely. I can email that over to the clerk, yes. Before we get into the general government budget, I would like to ask for a motion to separate the Recreation Department budget from the general government budget overall. I do serve as a seasonal employee with the Recreation Department, so I do not want to vote on that budget, and Vice Chair Moselli will probably be abstaining from that vote as well, as her son is a seasonal employee from the Recreation Department as well. So I'm just asking for a motion to separate Recreation Department from the general government budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so that will be a separate vote. Thank you. Okay, so the floor is open for what everyone's pleasure is. Vice Chair Moselli?
Yep, I'll start with a motion, and we can proceed with discussion. In the capital budget of the general fund, page 114, to reduce the widened surface and drain account from $158,600 to $0, we support this project as a top priority and direct the Town Manager to use budget reallocation monies from fiscal year 2018-2019 budget to fund it.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So essentially, what this will do is reduce the capital budget, which is in the general government budget by $158,600. However, we do support the project. There is money in this budget that is cash funded from budget reallocation, which is amounts that were not spent this year, so that motion is effectively directing the Town Manager to prioritize this project, but to reduce the budget by this amount for next year, so we're not taxing our residents again for that project. Is there any other discussion related to that?
I would ask a question of the Town Manager for the rationale for the $158,600, why it was put in there. Councilwoman Moselli said that she supports the project in the future year, so can you just explain to the council?
That's the money we use exactly for that. When we do road projects, we use this money for road widening and drainage accounts, so when we do a road, sometime we do drainage, so this is the money we use for that, for our road projects. This is, we use it in this particular case. If it's a priority, I'm fine with that, because I'll, obviously, Amelia and I will be looking for the asset relocation money now to go to the Board of Finance at their next meeting, so if that's a priority of the council, then it has to, the money has to go in there. I need that money, so as long as it's a priority for reallocation, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Ricchio?
I'm gonna, I'm assuming there's more cuts coming, so I'm gonna make the statement now, and it's appropriate because it's roads. So my feeling is this, and this is no reflection at all on our town staff, on our Public Works Department, I happen to believe we have probably the best Public Works Department in the state of Connecticut. This is purely about dollars and cents. If we, if there's extra money in that budget, then that money should be used to do additional roads, road maintenance. I have never, in all my years of being involved, seen our roads in worst, worst condition, ever, and it's a reflection simply on cash, and I'm not saying it's a reflection on the council as a whole, it all comes down to dollars. East Street, which I've been complaining about, and I can't believe that no more, there aren't more residents that come in here, East Street was supposed to be done like two years ago. Gary and I had this conversation numerous times, and you want to know the only reason he held it and did, and cut it in two, because he didn't want to be criticized at the time because he lived on East Street. That was the only reason that guy held back. East Street, drive down Savage Street, drive down Woodrow Street, Carey Street, Flanders Road, these are, I'm only naming the roads that I see every day, because that's the side of town I live on. Our roads are absolutely deplorable, and we can't continue with the potholes. Last week, last week in one day, I had to replace three tires on my car. One day. It's crazy. So before we start cutting and hacking, then we should add, move roads up. We can't continue, I go back to the days when I first got on the council of the curtains at the Apollo Middle School, and you used to go in there and you flick them and they would disintegrate. I don't want to go backwards. I just don't. And I think doing maneuvers like this, I don't know what else is coming tonight, but it's going backwards. We have firefighters here, try and drive the safety trucks down our roads now. Drive down, I'm telling you guys, take a ride on East Street, Woodrow Street, and Savage Street. Do it. If you don't live in that side of town, take a little trip. It's awful. I can't imagine what the other parts of the town look like. I would be opposed to this.
So just to respond to that, and then I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Lombardi. So for example, our intent with something like this is, it's almost a perfect wash. We know, for example, Councilwoman Moselli has been working to get money for the playscape. We know that she's raised $150,000. That is actually in this budget still for a cash-funded project for 2019. All we're saying is reallocate this $158,600, so it's $8,000 beyond that, and that's an example of something the manager, we're letting the manager manage, and he can reallocate that money because he doesn't need that. We've got it donated, thanks to Vice Chair Moselli's work. So again, we're not saying not to do it. That's why the motion stated, this is a priority for the council, we're not cutting it, we just are having him do it within the cash-funded projects where we know there's some flexibility.
That sounds really beautiful, but apparently you didn't listen to what I just said. It's going to cost, to do those roads I just mentioned, we're talking millions. Millions.
So Mr. Ricchio, you're more than welcome to add any motion, to add any amount of money to the budget. You're more than welcome to do that. I didn't hear you doing that, so right now, I'm speaking to the motion that was made. Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the reason that I'm going to vote no on this one is because it was already said that this project needs to go forward, and quite frankly, I have seen the way our Town Manager operates, and if he doesn't need something that's cash-funded, he's going to save it and he's going to put it back in in a future year. So I'm of the position, although I do appreciate the intent to cut the current year, we're really not saving anything. We're not canceling a project, we're not, you know, adjusting it. We're just saying, we're going to pay for it in a different way. I have faith that the Town Manager will handle the funds appropriately, and the benefit to the taxpayer will get there. It might not get there as Councilwoman Moselli made the motion, but it's going to get there. So I'm in support of the Town Manager's budget and his opinion and his rationale behind these numbers, so that's why I will be voting no on this motion.
Okay, just to comment on that, too, we're of course comfortable with the manager managing, which is why we're empowering him to decide what goes where. And to your point, Mr. Lombardi, if we don't do this and money isn't spent, it goes into the undesignated fund balance, which already clearly has a healthy balance, this will allow us to pass along the savings directly to our residents and save on them paying additional taxes when it's not necessary.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm very familiar with the project. I've been president of Rotary and twice, as a matter of fact. I appreciate their work and I appreciate their philanthropy within our community. However, I just want to make it clear to the public, the Rotary decided to help this town by funding the park at Municipal Memorial Park. We have not raised anything yet. I mean, we're, certainly, it's on our top priority. For us to take this money out of this fund in the hopes that Rotary will raise that amount of money is really premature, and I mean, I appreciate that Dawn has been there with Rotary, and however, it is Rotary's project. They, it was their idea, it was their focus, but we have not given the town $1 yet, and we won't be able to do that for a while. I do not believe that it's appropriate to take this, to reallocate funds until we have the money that we know is going to go back in to cover that. So as a result, I will not support this.
Okay, and again, want to just clarify, I'm not saying specifically that that project is going to be used. I just gave that as one example, and the line item for that project is $250,000.
Right.
We would still be essentially needing $100,000, so we reduce it.
So where would we get our money then? What are we saying? You know, you used the example, Mr. Chairman, and so I felt that that was where we were going to get this. So where is the money that's going to, where are we going to get this other money that the Town Manager is going to read?
We're directing the manager to look at his budget reallocated funds, which are cash-funded for 2019, and allowing him to prioritize what should be done. cash-funded for 2019, and allowing him to prioritize what should be done, because this is a priority for us. That's exactly what we're doing. It's letting him manage that.
So doesn't he know? Does he know? You know now, Mark, where you're going to get this money?
Well, yes, because if you look at the capital budget, I had, there's $550,000 approximately in cash.
Mm-hmm.
There's approximately $1.4 million in what we call budget reallocation funds.
Right.
And then the rest of it, we're taking out of the undesigned fund balance. So what happens is, is that if whatever's removed from the cash part, I then shift into the money that I'm using for the 1.4, and I either use the 1.4, which we've been meeting with all the department heads, you all are very familiar how I work, so we've met all the department heads, we're getting that money there. If I only come up with 1.4, then I prioritize, prioritize from the least important to the most important. These two, obviously, you know, when you're talking about this, I have a council priority. So this will be, I have three Board of Education projects in my 1.4 that are my priority. This is also going to be my priority, and as I work down. If Amelia and I and the department heads can come up with a little more money, we might be able to do the 1.4 plus these. But these, you know, when you talk about this project, it's a priority. So therefore, some of the other ones in my 1.4 may not be as much of a priority. So right now, in your capital budget has a $1.4 million budget reallocation number.
Yes.
If something else is added to it, then that number becomes, for instance, now add $158,000 to that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, if I can't come up with that number, then I take the least important project and don't do it.
What would your least important project be at this time?
I'd have to take a look at it. I'm not going to say that. I want to meet with my department heads. I do have five or six that are my least important, but I want to talk to the department heads before I make that decision.
But this is a very close council, Mr. Shoda. There are four of us who are asking a concrete question about where is this money going to come from, and what is your least important project? So that is a huge deal for a budget. A budget, we want to know where our money's going and what we're going to do. And it comes down to you, Mr. Shoda.
I understand.
Because you're the one that makes that decision, according to the chairman.
Well, actually, if I may, procedurally, it does have to come back to you. What happens is, when I do budget reallocation, how it works is, like Amelia and I put the numbers and the projects together, they go to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance then approves those, and then it comes to the council, and the council could either approve or not approve those. So, but to answer your question, I'm hearing now that there's more, that more responsibilities will be on the 1.4 million dollars. We may be in a position where we can come up with more than 1.4. I can't tell you that right now. But I'm telling you that obviously if this is a council priority, it's going to be right there at the top. It will get done, because I know I'll be able to get approximately 1.4. I don't know if I'll get any higher than that. So if I can't get higher than that, then some of them have to drop off, depending on what goes in there.
Thank you.
Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the town manager. You have already identified your priorities on page 180 of the budget. The 1.4 million is outlined right there.
Correct.
So this is extremely petty for us to be coming up here on budget night and telling him, we don't agree with the town manager's priorities in this specific order. He's already outlined that for us. So if we're going to say, oh, his 1.4 million, we don't like the priority, that is his priority right there. Now, if we came here and said, we disagree with this project, that might be different. But to tell him, and then to put him on the spot tonight on what is his priority, I think it's just, it's almost disrespectful to the town manager. So I'm supporting the 1.4 million that you have put in the budget as your priority, and I'm going to support that number.
Mr. Chairman, can I just respond to that a little bit?
Go ahead.
Well, I think that the main point tonight was that we also didn't want to come here and go line by line by line. I mean, there were some of the things in the capital plan, quite frankly, ATV vehicles, yeah, they're nice to have, make it easier on some of our crew to be able to go down linear trail and that sort of thing, but I could never have voted for, you know, voted in favor of an ATV vehicle. There were other regular vehicles in here for the highway parks, equipment for them. There was a new key fob system, a communication system at one of the departments. You know, there were a number of things that we had listed, but then we said, well, we'll let Mark...
Manage.
Manage, exactly.
He already has.
Manage the day-to-day. Well, then I guess we can go line by line. Again, I'm not going to vote, you know, vote in favor of some of these wants versus needs.
Any other, Councilwoman Morrissey?
So I'd just like to point out, in very basic terms, that that 1.4 that we're talking about are projects that didn't happen last year, which is why the money is available this year. So those projects that he's prioritizing are bonus projects in effect. So we're not saying that this project isn't an important project, and we obviously want him to do it. And if anything, Mr. Ricchio, this speeds up the road process, in my mind, because now we're telling him to do it now with the cash now, as opposed to next fiscal year.
Minus 100 and something thousand.
Right.
Because that money would go into fund balance, and fund balance can be only used for one-time purchases, and road repairs are not one-time purchases.
It all comes from the same place. I mean, we, it does. We could play around with semantics of it, but it's the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And the taxpayers, the one thing that a government can do is provide quality roads. I mean, that's how government started. Quality roads and infrastructure. And we're failing miserably. Miserably.
So I want to emphasize again, we are prioritizing the roads to be done. You're making it sound like we're cutting $158,000 from roads. That is absolutely not what we're doing. So is there any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
John Barry?
Yes.
William Dietzick?
No.
Tom Lombardi?
No.
Don Selly?
Yes.
Kelly Morrissey?
Yes.
Christopher Pulis?
Yes.
Michael Ricchio?
No.
Victoria Triano?
No.
Christopher Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Looking for another motion?
Okay. Also in the capital budget of the general fund, page 115, this motion is to reduce the public safety radio system from $391,500 to $0. We support this project as a top priority and direct the town manager to use budget reallocation monies from the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget to fund it.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It is open for discussion.
I would make the same argument, that if you were going to reallocate money, then I would add it to our infrastructure, which is in poor shape.
Okay. And I think we would say the same argument is that we are prioritizing this project, but allowing the town manager to determine what needs to be done in a priority order.
Just, Mr. Chairman, for the rest of, this is actual contractual requirement, so this will have to be done by, as part of the reallocation project.
So it would have to be done, Mark? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. This is year, correct me if I'm wrong, year four?
Year five.
This is year five of our 50 years, so this one has to be done. So once again, it'll be, it might have to be one of my top priorities in the one point.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lombardi?
Thank you. Is this related to the police department system?
Correct.
Yes.
And my next comment is going to be, we just watched a presentation about increased collaboration and communication. Did anybody from the majority party who controls this vote tonight meet with the police department, Board of Finance, or the town manager regarding this beforehand? Or are these just surprises for the town?
So, again, Mr. Lombardi, we're not cutting the project. We're telling him it's a priority to fund the project, but use the funds from last year. And we are not going through line by line and telling the manager what to cut in order to fund this project. I agree with you, if we were saying, we want to reduce this project, period. That is not what we're saying. We're saying we want this to be a priority for the manager to do with the budget reallocated funds from, that are remain in the budget from last year, from the current operating budget.
Right.
But it's not a priority. It's a mandate.
It's a mandate.
My one issue with what we're doing so far, and I guess more of these are coming, is we're being asked to vote on your guys' advancement of policy without knowing the other, what the other option would have been. That's my concern with these. I obviously want to save the taxpayers' money if people think things are frivolous, but I'm being asked tonight to vote on a reallocation of money and a reprioritization, which essentially changing policy, without knowing what the effect is. That's my biggest fear.
Mm-hmm.
I wish we had the information to understand tonight's the vote, I'm not going to ask for it, but that's my hesitation in voting yes.
And we don't know either. I mean, the manager's going to determine it at a later time. I have no idea what he's going to prioritize either.
Can I make one other comment? The word budget is being missed here a little bit. So in my profession, I deal a lot with budgets, and they are just that. So there could be a lot of change that happens in this capital plan that allows Mark to do everything on this list, and he has a surplus, and then that goes into the fund balance. And maybe, you know, he increases then the roads, like Mr. Ricchio said. But just keep in mind, these are all budget numbers. They're ideas. They're not, we have no concrete, solid quotes for that unless maybe we have the public radio one, because the police department does require that. So he's going to prioritize that, and they still all might happen.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Triano.
We don't budget by whim. We don't budget because, well, today I feel it's a priority or whatever. What we have before us is what the town manager has felt is important. Through all of his years of experience, he prepared a budget. We went through years and years early on, and some of you were on the council back then, where we would have to go through the town budget line by line, because we were never sure if it was accurate. Through Mark, through Gary, and through Mr. Wykcell, we were able to trim that down. So when Mark presents a budget, and he's proven himself over and over that it's conservative, and that if there is any extra, it will go back into the general fund, we should allow that to happen. He's the one that has an idea exactly how this money should be spent. That's why he prepares a budget. That's why we just don't give him a sack of money and say, go and do whatever you feel like, Mark. He has prepared a budget. It's been voted on by the Board of Finance as the perspectives that he will implement. We are not just giving up that authority to Mark is quite insulting. He has already done this work. And now we're saying, well, if he feels like it's important, he can do it. He's already said it's important.
So I'd like to counter with, there is no one doubting Mark's capabilities, but budgets and projects change, which is why we have the 1.4 million available today. Because last year, he did his due diligence, and somehow he still ended up with 1.4. So you have all those other projects on there because Mark was doing his job.
Yes.
So there's nothing to say that he's not going to do that again this year. So no one's discounting Mark or his work.
Well, then let him do what he's already programmed to do, what he's already said to us.
And we are absolutely letting him do that. The money that we're suggesting, instead of him paying, instead of taxing the taxpayers on, is money that we're just telling him to take out of the money the taxpayers were taxed on last year, that didn't get spent. Because if it doesn't get spent, it goes into the designated fund balance, and then can only be spent on specific one-time items, not all that stuff that we need over and over again.
What you're presenting, Councilwoman, is budgeting by whim.
I don't understand that.
And, well, I do. And I think that going through all of these line items this way, and saying that Mark is going to take the responsibility, he has. He's given it to the elected people to act on it. So if you feel that it should be cut, say it should be cut. Don't go back and put it back on Mark. Do what you need to do. He's presented a budget that lists his priorities. Let's vote on the budget. And if you have problems with certain line items, let's talk about it and cut those line items. But don't keep throwing it back on Mark and deflecting the responsibility of this council.
Councilman Ricchio has to be recognized, but again, I want to emphasize, because you're saying, Councilwoman Triano, we are absolutely not saying that we don't want to do this project. In fact, we're doing the opposite. We're prioritizing it and telling the manager, this is a priority for us. And second of all, out of respect for the manager, rather than go through and nitpick line by line, we're empowering the manager to determine what should be cut to replace this project. So it is absolutely out of total and complete respect for the manager, not the opposite.
But he already put it in his budget. Because he already put it in his budget.
Okay.
He already said, it's important. It's in my budget.
Mr. Ricchio?
This is a question to Mark. Mark, what's the, when's this building due to be purchased?
Well, at your next meeting, there'll be two, as you all know, there'll be two ordinances to be requested. One is for $900,000 for the roads. Obviously, that's good for the conversation tonight. You'll see that in your capital budget. Also, you're going to talk about the fact that we're going to be asking for a bond ordinance, which requires a referendum this November for this particular building. And we'll present a, we'll have a presentation with a video for you at your meeting on the 28th.
And what's the cost of this building?
There's three ways you can go with the building. You could buy it, which would be $2.9 million. You could bond it over a period of time, which of course has interest rates to it. And we're going to go through all this, and we already did the video, so I don't want to give away the whole video. And then finally, you could do nothing, and then continue to lease it, which is also going to be part of the video as the cost of it.
Thank you.
So obviously, it'll be up to the voters, and also this particular board and the Board of Finance, on how they want to move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Amelia, can you help me out on this? This is actually being cash-funded, the question Mr. Ricchio talked about, in the budget we have before us. Can you help the municipal center, John Wykcell Building?
No, actually, in this current year, we have it as being bonded.
Bonded.
Yes. We don't have it as cash-funded, because that's the first step, would be to determine whether we're going to...
So it's listed in the budget document as a project that will be considered for...
Bonding.
Right. Because it would have to go to referendum in this November. That's why it had to be in this year's budget.
But the choice is always going to be with the town council and the Board of Finance, if you want to pay cash.
Thank you.
But it still has to go to referendum.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the motion.
Okay. Are you okay, Mr. Lombardi?
Yeah, I just will, I'll follow up on the municipal building questions.
Okay, you sure?
Yep.
Okay, so we have, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Lombardi?
No.
Selly?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
No.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Moving on, any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the deputy town manager stipend. I'm going to give the line item, 10010031510060, resulting in a reduction of $10,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Just a question, what's the rationale for that?
My personal rationale is that, you know, when I agreed to hire Mark, he came with a wealth of experience, and I was not in favor at that time. I made my, I made myself known at that time as well that I would not be in favor of a deputy town manager anytime soon. And with the fiscal climate right now, it's just not something that I can support the, you know, because obviously, you're headed down a road, so to speak, with regard to another employee for the town of Southington. So this isn't really, for me, this is not a change. This is something that I had cited two years ago. And I'm still of that mindset. We'll see in a couple of years.
Mr. Dietzick?
Nice question of the town manager. If, in the event the town manager becomes incapacitated, which not gonna would, never happens, what is the immediate succession plan? What happens?
Under our policies in the town of Southington, it's the director of public works.
Always has been.
Whoever, whoever holds that title of director of public works, since we've had it, we've established director of public works back around, I think, 2005, 2006. So that's been the policy since that period of time.
Could I just ask, so Mark, you were assistant town manager under John Wykcel, assistant town manager under Gary Brumbach, and so why did they put you in? If the director of public works could act as assistant, there's something, this town is growing so much for $10,000 to have someone help and take over in case you become incapacitated, or, good for, my goodness, if you go on vacation, it's just penny wise and pound foolish. For $10,000 in a corporation this size, with this budget, we're going to deny the man an assistant.
I know I spoke to many of you on this. My theory wasn't me being incapacitated. That wasn't my theory on this. My theory was, and no disrespect to the town attorney, I get along very, very well, but since we've had an attorney on the outside at this point, it makes it much more difficult. She's got a career, she's got that situation there. So I felt that since I'm doing so much internal, and she knows how much internally I can do, I can have an assistant help me with that. And to be perfectly blunt, it's approximately a little less than one and a half hours a week. So that's why I put it in, is that the assistant could help me. Even if they spend an hour and a half or two hours a week, I'm still ahead of the game than paying, not that I don't want to pay you, paying her hourly rate. That was the reason I put it in. Believe me, you know the hours I work. That's not going to change no matter what you do tonight. But the fact of the matter is, I felt that from a financial standpoint, it would benefit the town. And then obviously, sure, I'm not as young as I used to be, and, you know, if I'm away, or if something happens to me, sure, that would happen. But currently, as to answer your question, it's the director of public works. But I put it in more as a help to me, bounce things off of, and help in the administration part. But then again, you know, obviously, it's a council manager, form of government. I understand how the world works.
Mr. Ricchio.
Mark, so you're not creating a new position with that, obviously, with $10,000?
No, it's no great surprise. We discussed it, the council and I discussed it. We'd be talking about, at least certainly the chair and the minority leader, I discussed it. If it went forward, it would be a non-union department head. They'd be interviewed. But as you know, only the council can appoint. I can't appoint a deputy. Only the council can. That's the ordinance, but-
But if we were able to reduce some time that's spent moving stuff maybe to the town attorney, what do we pay the town attorney per hour?
$150 an hour.
$150 an hour? What have we paid, can you tell me what we paid this year, one full year to the town attorney?
Right here.
I have that.
Give your tax return.
$140,000, Councilwoman.
Well, no, we're estimating, well, the actual through this date was-
We're estimating through the end of the year.
Through March, no, through March, it was 41,700. Well, that includes the progress.
That includes the progresses.
Yeah, we can't.
What was the actual, I think, one of you asked me what that was?
It's 32.
32?
Actual, and then we have an accrual of 9,700.
32,000.
32,000. But that's not just, that's just not the town attorney, though. That's the town attorney plus outside legal counsel. I know we had a couple of cases where we had an outside legal counsel. I won't get into the cases, but that includes them too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Morrissey.
So I'd just like to make my piece here. It's not about the $10,000 for me. It's about if Mark truly needs a deputy town manager, I would have rather had him put in, "I need a deputy town manager," not a stipend, a full position, or, you know, a town attorney as opposed to an outside counsel. Like, if that's what he really needs, I'd rather have that. This, to me, kind of feels like skirting around that. And I don't want to go through that on the town side. If we have an open position, I want it to be posted. I want it to be interview processed. I want to have it be legit. And this, to me, didn't feel like that.
You know, a year ago, he wanted a full position. Right.
I wasn't in that position.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the town manager. To what degree has the assistant town attorney been utilized, Attorney Bedard?
He's actually been utilized. He's been taking over the entire development division. I assigned, with the consultation of the town attorney, I assigned him the entire development division, which is all planning and zoning, conservation, the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
What is he getting paid a year?
They both get paid the same. I only know the hourly rate. I couldn't tell you specifically.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes, thank you, Mr.-
Put it in the number that Mr. Lombardi had.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Councilwoman Misselli through you.
Sure.
With the motion that you made of a $10,000 reduction of legal fees, the town manager was very clear that he wanted-
It wasn't legal fees, though.
I'm sorry, the $10,000 reduction of the assistant town manager fees. The town manager made it clear that this was a net zero for the town. So would you support restoring $10,000 to the legal line item, which it was originally taken from?
But, see, that's just it. This isn't-
I gotta stop the conversation because that's not, that's not proper. You can't, you can't go any higher than my budget. So the charter will not allow you to restore any money to the town attorney's budget, because I cut it as part of this process. So if manager, if that part gets cut, you cannot restore back to the town attorney's line item.
Thank you. Not only that, I just, you know, I want to make clear that what I was told as to why, and Mark just said it himself, the deputy town manager, for this money or whatever it would be, is not to take on legal responsibilities. He just said it'd be someone to vet projects with, and, you know, whatever the other items that you just mentioned.
The RFPs and things like-
It has nothing to do, it's not an attorney.
Right.
I think, I think-
I would, just on the comment side of it, again, the town of this size, the town manager has put forth an opportunity to fix the organizational structure, to create a stability in town hall that he sees appropriate. He's taken it upon himself to reduce another line item by the same amount. I mean, I think we should support this. I know there are a lot of people that say, "Oh, well, this just creates the opening for another position." You know what? I have faith in the nine people that sit up here. It's not going to be us in the future. It'll be some other people. But I have faith that at that point, they will review that decision. And again, I have a lot of faith in our town manager. He's been here for a long time. The town is doing very well. And I think we should support him with this.
I understand. I do. I think that we are stable. And I think we just saw that in our bond rating report that we received. My God, it was glowing. So let's keep doing what we're doing, because we're doing something right, that's for sure. You know what it is, too? I just have to say this, that I feel like, you know, was it a month ago or so, when the whole tolls issue came up, that we were asked to take a stance on tolls, and that's a state issue that we have absolutely no purview over. But what I do have purview over is our municipal spending plan. That's what I can control in terms of spending and taxation for our residents. I take that responsibility very seriously. I've heard the prevailing message everywhere I've gone, not just for the past couple of months during budget season either, just in general, people can't afford anymore because of increasing costs elsewhere. I take that message to heart. I vote for fiscal prudence at this time. I hope you all will as well. And, you know, so yeah, these are the things that I have control over. That's just me. That's just my personal opinion.
Mr. Dietzick?
I just want to say one more thing. I just felt that this vote is the same as the vote, the stipend method we used for the apple harvest committee, who we voted for then, I think it's the same thing, it's the same amount of money. I think a deputy town manager is far, far more important than adding a stipend for somebody for the apple harvest. I think this opens our town up in the event of a catastrophic event, anything.
The difference is, that's not funded in the general government budget.
I just think the spirit behind, the spirit behind the position, the vote, and the method of getting there is the same.
Mr. Ricchio.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, Mark got hurt a couple of months ago, right? And for three days, was really incapacitated. I'm sure he took calls as he's on his way to the hospital. He probably takes four weeks a year, I'm guessing, approximately that. If I were to call the town engineer tomorrow to have discussions on stuff that's going on the council, he'd look at me like I had four eyes. He has no clue. He's an engineer, he's running the town. Yeah, you're second in command, but he's, he has no clue on what this council does. He's out building roads and bridges and sewers and all that other stuff. At least in that scenario where Mark got hurt, or Mark's in Florida, he takes phone calls. I get upset with you, Mark, when you're in Florida, or wherever you go, and I make a phone call not knowing you're there, and you answer. Like, that's annoying. You should be on vacation.
Actually, that actually happened to me. I called-
Well, it happens all the time.
And he handled it from Florida. He's on vacation. He can't stay with his family. He's handling my concern while he's in Florida.
If there's an assistant for $10,000 a year, at least I know that when Mark's away, I can make a phone call and have a somewhat logical conversation on a topic that's before the town council, or that's something that has nothing to do with engineering roads and bridges. Because they're meeting on a regular basis, and they're, that person's an assistant, not second in command. There's a major difference. And the town government worked very well. And I just wanted to add on to something that Kelly said. Unfortunately, Kelly, you weren't here in the years, or maybe fortunately, where there was a lot of shenanigans in the town budget and in the Board of Ed budget. And we got to a point, for the most part, I can say, at least on our side, we put people on the Board of Finance with accounting and finance degrees. If you wanted to be on the Board of Finance in the Republican Party, you had to have some form of financial background. And the reason that we did that, and I'm not knocking anybody that doesn't, but the reason we did that was so that we could bring accountability to the process. And we brought accountability to the process, which in turn, put pressure on all, on the town manager and all the departments to bring accountability in that process. And we got rid of, thank God, we got rid of all the padding and all the smoke and mirror shows. And let me tell you, they were massive. So outside of the firefighters tonight and their families that are here, this room would be empty tonight. In the years where all the smoke and mirrors were going on, and there was no trust on the Board of Finance, and there was no trust in our staff, packed, we'd have to vacate this building. We'd have to have Deronowski School on standby, or DePaula Middle School for the Board of Finance meeting, and for the town council meetings, and for the Board of Education budget meetings. And that doesn't happen anymore, because this community changed the way we do things, and we put trust in our staff, and we put trust in our elected officials on the Board of Finance. And so we have now a process where we don't need to go through all this. The professionals did it. They looked it over in good faith, and they, and our town staff does things in good faith, like, "Hey, I need some help here, people. You know, I got hurt last week, or I'm going to Florida, wherever. I need a little bit of help for $10,000." So that doesn't happen anymore, thank God. I just don't want to go backwards, because we haven't done this in a while. We used to do this when I first got on the council. We'd get all excited on budget, and I'd go, "We'll cut this, we'll cut that," and we're cutting things. We had no clue what they were. I don't want to go backwards. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Lombardi?
No.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
Absolutely no.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the town manager executive assistant salary from $63,893 to $61,390. The increase is a proposed raise of 7%. I'm asking for a reduction of $2,503, which brings it to the standard 3%.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Make a motion to call the roll?
Well, I do have a comment. Now that we just passed, the previous motion just passed, which reduced the assistant role, can I ask a question of the town manager on what his, what this personnel is doing, and how that would have related to the passage of the assistant position? Because my assumption is that there's more workload for this individual, especially now that there's not going to be the assistant stipend.
Well, remember the old structure, okay? The old structure had an assistant slash town attorney and a secretary, and then there's a new structure that we have right now. The old deputy's position used to have things like doing all the RFPs. Because I was an attorney at the time, I did all the contracts and things like that, drafting the contract, drafting the deeds. When we do, for instance, when we just did the two open space parcels, that would be something that I would have done as the town attorney and all that kind of stuff. But in this particular case, it doesn't have to go to the town attorney, because we could do that internally. So she does, she does all that for me. So that was part of the raise. The other part of the raise was, obviously, she was going to be the administrative assistant for the deputy, too. So obviously, there's not going to be a deputy. So I understand what's going on here. But she certainly has a much bigger role than she had previous, because she does a lot of the contract stuff that, with me, that I do internally. She does all the RFPs with me that I do internally, and she does the deeds, which I do internally now.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just, I don't understand how we say we have deference to the town manager in the first two votes, and now this is the exact opposite.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, maybe it's the first time I've done this. I've never, but-
Again, I think the intent was to give the raise, so the salary currently is $59,602. It is a raise up to $63,000, I'm sorry, up to $61,390. It's just to go back to the 3% that every other employee got.
Could I ask a question, please?
I just want a clarification. It is higher than, all the employees are getting 2.2%, not 3%.
Oh, there you go. So it's higher than most of the employees.
That's good. Excuse me, if I-
Because otherwise, I'd have to give everyone, my employees, 3%.
Okay, all right.
Amelia, what is the, I don't know if I can even ask this question. This is on the town side. If we were looking at the Board of Ed side, the administrative secretaries, are they on the same par as Laura? Do they make the same amount?
They're paid higher.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Who's paid higher?
Board of Education administrative secretary.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
No.
Lombardi?
No.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Nope.
Triano?
No.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Okay, any other motions?
My final motion of the evening will be a motion to reduce the fire department personnel in half by $70,000, because it was approximately $140,000, thereby reducing the request of two firefighters to one. And I'd like to open this up for discussion if there's a second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's open for discussion.
I'd like to go.
Go ahead.
Okay, terrific. So I want to start off this conversation by stating emphatically that I am in support of public safety, obviously, for our community. I hope that we can have a discussion about this matter, you know, without bringing in that sort of rhetoric, because I venture to say that every one of us on the council understands the import of public safety. As for the hiring of new firefighters, I have some concerns. One of the charges for our new chief and the entire department was to cultivate a better relationship between the career firefighters and our volunteers. And while I think that some inroads have been made, I feel that there is a lot more work to be done. I don't know that we've figured out the best and most effective way to utilize our volunteers, and I just can't throw more paid staff at the department and hope that some of the internal challenges disappear. I also have concerns about some of the disparities in the messaging over the past month or so. I'm being told that on the one hand, in 10 short years' time, we will no longer have a volunteer component to our fire department. But I'm also being told that we value our volunteers, we have solidified relations among the two factions, and I'm confused as to which it is. If our, truly, if our leading fire officials believe that in 10 years, we will no longer have an all-paid, or we will no longer have volunteers, and thus we'll have an all-paid staff, I feel that's a bigger conversation that we would need to have as a community, rather than just the hiring of two additional career firefighters at this point. I think our new chief has obviously hit the ground running in terms of tackling overtime issues and staffing levels. He hasn't even been here a year yet. And I think it would be overzealous on our part to think that he is fully acclimated to all of the bureaucracy that is inherent within a department of that size. I offered this compromise this evening of approving one firefighter at this time. There's been a lot of back and forth on the expected savings of two new firefighters. But if I've learned anything on this council, it's to be leery of what the savings are going to be. We've heard that many times, that savings will be forthcoming, and I don't feel like they are always fully realized. So I'd like to see what the new numbers are with this one new career person. Go from there. We can revisit the topic in six months' time, or whatever is a time period that we choose. I understand that in the short term, two new firefighters have a negligible impact on this particular budget, but I need to look at the big picture. And I do believe that two new municipal positions have longstanding implications for our community in terms of contractual salaries, benefits, and everything else that goes along with new employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dietzick?
So if you look at anyone's resume up here, I've, one, I've never fought a fire. I have never worked at a fire department. I'm not a firefighter. I've never dealt with the fire department's budget and its essential planning. We just conducted a national search to hire a new fire chief. He reports to a bipartisan fire commission. That's essentially, I'm going to say specializes this situation. This is the first time he's come with us with a budget proposal. And again, we give no deference to the professionals, the people that do this essentially for a living. I just, I could not be more on the other side of an issue on this. I respect your political courage for what you said, Councilwoman Misselli, I truly do. I just, I cannot be on the, so much on the other side of this one. We have to defer to, I mean, these are the professionals. I don't know how I can sit here and say, "I'm going to look at the big picture. I know more than they do." I do not. They know substantially more than I do.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. What, this is just another appalling issue for me, because to my knowledge, I'm the only one who took the fire department up on their request to meet with them. I met with them for four hours. And I don't think anyone else did. And that right there is disgusting. This is a chief that came in from out of state, and his number one priority was to fix the overtime. He comes to us, and I made my opinions clear to the chief, that I was not happy with the comments that were made at the public hearing, because they missed the boat. People get up and say, "Oh, this is going to happen, that's going to happen." The addition of these two men, or women, the two firefighters, will increase their operational effectiveness, and it will reduce the overtime significantly. And if any- And if any of us had gone there and met with him and sat down and did a little research, we would know that. So I made my opinions clear to the department on, to Councilwoman Moselli's points. We want to see integration. It's an ongoing effort. We want to see that. And it's going on right now. But we have to place our faith and trust in the new chief. And he's already shown. Last year, fiscal year, fiscal year 18, we had overtime of $918,000. Okay? He didn't, the new chief didn't even have an opportunity to create a new budget. So he's, he's dealing with the current personnel. Just by some operational changes in-house, that number's going to go down to 765,000. With the addition of these two new men, it's going to go down to 550,000, possibly even lower than that. So this is a public safety thing. We, this town, in my life, I've never seen more fires in the last four to five months than I have this year. So these guys are professionals. They know what this council expects from them in terms of the integration that we want to see. And I'm putting my faith in them. So I'm supporting it. I want to leave the budget as it is. Leave the two people in there.
Just, just one comment. I'd like to thank the chief. I've reached out to him probably more times than he cares for me to. So, Mr. Lombardi, yes, I have reached out to the chief multiple times.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Morrissey?
I would just like to clarify for me too. So I did talk to the chairman of the commission as well as emails back and forth with Mr. Butler. So please don't think that you're the only one that did any work because I did a lot of work on this topic too.
Thank you.
I just, both parties last year ran on public safety. We both did. And tonight, we decide who is really believing in public safety and not. To challenge this second firefighter, we have seen over and over again, the statistics show that we are below the state suggestion. We're below federal suggestion in our manpower or woman power. There, we, the chief has been valiant in his ability and the, and the, also the brass and the, and the unions have worked so hard together and very closely to get that, that overtime money down, that overtime hours down to help. This is not, this is for Southington. This is for those that know we need another firefighter. We need two, we need more than two, but we can't afford more than two this year. But my goodness, we've already seen the impact that the chief has made on the budget, on the overtime, on his ability to, to work with both volunteers as well as paid staff. We understand, we've seen it over and over again with this new chief. I say, give the man the tools he needs. I don't understand this. I don't understand some of the, the stuff that's going on tonight. We need to give our managers the tools that they need in order for us to evaluate them. How can we evaluate them unless we give them what they need to perform their jobs? These are trained, listen, I went to fire school. I got there and I, and they said, okay, we're going to go, we're going to go in the building. Stay close. I go, I'm not going in that building. Let me tell you something. I'm not going in there. But these guys do it all the time. And we need to support them. This is the year, not next year, this year. We have seen the, the impact and the savings, and we can stand with our firefighters. For goodness sakes, they risk their lives every day for us. We need to stand now. I understand if we don't have it. We've got the money. We've shown the, the ability to save money and to see new policies enacted. Stand with our firefighters. I will not support that, that motion.
Councilman Barry? You sound like Joe Biden. Very good.
Oh, there we go. Two old timers.
Let me, let me just say, this has been a probably very prolonged and lengthy discussion over the last several months. Let's get real. Just, we'll try to be calm and not so much drama. You're getting two firefighters. The votes aren't there to just give one. So just want to make that clear. And I don't want to bring into the politics, one, like, some party's better than other party with public safety. I don't care what religion you are, what party you are. People want good public safety. They want good, good police officers. They want good firefighters. But they also want good services, you know, at public works or the parks or whatever it might be. So you could go on and on. So anyhow, this, in my opinion, was a compromise because, just to give everyone a little history lesson, for eight years, the fire, the previous fire chief requested through his budget process, new firefighters. Every year. I wasn't in any position to, to get them even in the budget. The town manager at the time, through his expertise as a town manager, as a governing, you know, the leader of the town, every year, that town manager cut those requests. So I just want to, just so everyone understands, there's a little history here. So this year, we get two. Certainly, you know, fire commissioner's been advocating for four. They talk about a safer grant, which is actually probably something I would encourage the fire department to pursue. Certainly come to the council before you sign up for the application. Because I was talking to the paid firefighters. We have a lot of paid firefighters that are going to be reaching retirement age. So this force is, is going to be some, see some changes over the next decade. So go for the safer grant. Hopefully, we'll get it. Safer grant's a good way to alleviate any cost to the taxpayers. I thought one was a good compromise because I want to see the hard data. The new chief, he's been here a very short time. He has tried to control the overtime, and I appreciate that. But whenever you hire more government employees, and I understand in any town, it costs money to have police officers. It costs money to have firefighters, and those are important. But with those, all these new employees, there is a lot of additional hard costs that have to be into the calculation. So I just wanted one firefighter, review the data, see what the overtime numbers are, see how the response times are, see what the staffing levels, how they could become creative, maybe through the opening up contracts and things like that, and see what we can do. And also, the conversation about volunteers, when I heard that in 10 years, the volunteers might become obsolete, that's really dangerous in New England. Because in New England, there are so many towns, medium-sized towns, small towns, that only have volunteer fire departments. So if that's how the trend is, I don't know how a lot of these New England towns are going to do it if there's no volunteers. I think there's a lot of volunteers that want to step up to the plate. I hope they're, they are. I think the chief is trying to reach out and doing some work to try to create a better dialogue between the paid and the volunteers. And I hope that continues. And I'm supportive of one. Support public safety. I support the fire department. As a kid, I hung out at fire departments. My father was a longtime volunteer for over 25 years. My uncles, a lot of family members. So the fire department's very important to me. It's part of who I am. And I respect and honor all the work, the fire department, the men. I don't think we have any volunteer women firefighters yet. The men that do for our town, volunteers and paid. So thank you all for your service. I do support one. But the vote's not there. So you're going to get your two.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the roll, please.
Barry?
Yes. I mean, I'm sorry. Yes, I support the elimination of one. Yep.
Dietzick?
No.
Lombardi?
No.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
No.
Poulos?
No.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
Thank you, no.
Homary?
No. Okay, that motion fails. Moving on, looking for another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the fire equipment line item ending in 9030 by $15,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Rick.
What are we reducing and why?
This is the fire equipment line.
What part of the fire equipment?
The chief made a recommendation that this is an area where we can cut. We actually have another couple suggestions to cut in the fire department as well after consultation with the chief.
The evidence of that recommendation?
What's that?
What's the evidence of that recommendation?
I just said, I asked the chief if we needed to find cuts in the department. Where could we do it? And this is what he suggested.
What are the other cuts?
Well, we have this motion before us, and then we can.
We just know what they are now. I mean, let's come out, stop playing this game. What are they?
Fifty thou, an additional $50,000 in overtime because by adding the two firefighters, which we just agreed to do, the chief feels he could reduce that budget by $50,000. It's what he originally wanted to do and put in the 550 as a conservative estimate, but he feels that we could do it. And then the other one is $10,000 in legal fees because the negotiations, they're in a good place. So we have a motion before us to reduce fire equipment by 15,000.
So I will not be in favor of reducing fire equipment after what I've just seen here in the last two months in Southington. But the rationale that you just pointed out, the chief's okay with that because he just got to do the reduction in the overtime makes sense based on what time he said. I would support that.
Okay. And that will be a separate motion, so we'll vote on them separately.
On the, on this motion with the equipment, I do think it is quite petty. But I do appreciate the fact that you reached out to the chief, ran it by him ahead of time. And I'll, I'll support your motion on that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
No, I will not.
Homary?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Looking for the next motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the fire department legal fees, line item ending in 4010 by $10,000.
Okay. And as, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
That's also based on the chief's recommendation.
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
No.
Homary?
Yes. And the last motion that was previously mentioned, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the fire department overtime line item ending in 0020 by an additional $50,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Mr. Lombardi?
I think more of a comment. Councilwoman Moselli mentioned it too. I think it's incumbent on the Board of Finance and this board to continue to monitor this. I think it's been three or four years. It even got to a point where the appropriations were going before the Board of Finance. I don't think we need to go to that level, but I think it's good for the future councils. You know, we put our faith in the fire department, and I think it's a two-way street, and they understand that. So, and again, this was, this proposal was also reviewed with the chief.
Correct.
Is that right, Councilman? Thank you.
So the chief's recommendation again is yes.
Again, the chief originally felt that he could do 500,000. He put in 550 to be a little bit more conservative. When we started discussing whether or not we were going to support two firefighters, the chief felt that with two firefighters, that this line could be reduced by an additional $50,000. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Barry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Moselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Homary?
Yes. Okay, congratulations to Fire Department for their two new employees. Great. Mr. Barry?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring attention to page seven, investment revenues, be line item ending in 0010. It's interest on investments. The town finance department has budgeted rather conservatively after consultation and some extensive review. I would like to increase the revenue line by $100,000. And that was on the recommendation of the finance director.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to increase the amount of interest on investments from 1 million to 1,100,000.
And just so the public understands, because the budget documents can be pretty tedious, this actually is a net positive for taxpayers because it increases the revenue without going to the taxpayers for additional taxes. So this is increased revenue based on interest on investments.
It's also important to note here in the budget, year-to-date is 1,95,825 for this fiscal year. So we're already pretty close to your budget projection. Mr. Ricchio?
This is guaranteed?
Well.
Well, I could just guarantee.
Nothing's guaranteed.
I'm asking the Director of Finance, Amelia, is this guaranteed?
It's, nothing's guaranteed, but basically, we did an analysis. We were asked to take a look at it. The treasurer, myself, and the town manager reviewed the numbers, and we feel that we can increase it by 100,000. The estimate.
Really?
Next year. Based on the current amount of revenue that we have, plus the cash flows that we're projecting for the cost next year.
I've never heard of such a thing. Other than making everybody feel all hunky-dory, like this is crazy. There's no guarantee. You can guarantee a cut. We've learned that tonight. You can't guarantee future revenue based on some what? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that was an accident. Based on what? Like, the past? The economy? I mean, this is just, come on, guys. This is ridiculous.
Okay, so, Mr. Ricchio, as you know, all budgets are estimates. The fees at the.
So then leave it alone, John.
Well, because we don't want to overtax people. And the recommendation of the finance director is that this would make fiscal sense. So, I mean, we, a lot of the revenues come in a much lower. That means we overtaxed our residents. So here we have an expert that says, listen, interest on investments are going up, and it certainly would be appropriate to pass that savings to taxpayers.
I'm trying not to laugh. The experts put forth the budget. They reacted to a call from one of you. This is pulled out of thin air.
Okay, that's not, that's not how they operate. And the budgets are produced back in, you know, six months ago. So things change.
Let, let Councilman Barry finish, please.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a comment. When, when any council person asks the staff to look at the revenue lines, so what we did over the last.
Month and a half.
Month and a half, is that we always look at the revenue lines because of this. I got involved very recently because the director got a phone call. So I got involved with the treasurer, and we sat down and said, of the revenue lines, all our revenue lines, we have plenty of them, what do we feel the most comfortable with that is underestimated? And I'll let Amelia speak after that. She, she, she and the treasurer were very confident that they felt this one was underestimated based upon where we currently are.
Based on our, based on our, our investments, based on building permits, based, based on what?
No investments.
This is, this is just, this is our investment account.
Right.
Our investment account for the last couple of years has been running very, very good. So if you look at, if you look at C, what we give to the Board of Finance and through the Board of Finance, through you each year, the revenue has been very good. My theory when I budget is I budget conservatively. My director is also very conservative. When asked the question specifically by a council member, we reviewed that with the, with the treasurer, which line item do we feel the most comfortable with? And that was the one.
I've got to believe most of our investments are in fixed accounts. Are they not?
Most of our investments are in, in tiered CDs or in money market accounts. We're not allowed to put money in, in operational funds, in stock market, or anything of that sort.
Right. Exactly. So, so then this number should have been put in the budget to begin with. But Mark just said you got a phone call.
Basically, what the difference is, is having a better idea of the, the way that we're going to be spending the money next year, especially capital. Capital's huge. What we spend on capital, and we've gotten more information on that, plus the, we anticipated that maybe the, the investment returns were going to be dropping a little bit. And now that we find that they've been pretty steady, that, that's what we're basing it on.
Okay. I'm just going to make, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, finish.
I'm just going to make a couple more. This is the smoke and mirrors that I had alluded to earlier. I've been sitting back for two years, well, no, sorry, for a year and whatever, however many months, just watching and waiting to see where we were falling in economic development in Southington. And in the beginning of this presentation tonight, and it's happened in the last several months, almost bragging about how much money we've increased in our tax base, based on economic development. Mr. Homary, I just said it tonight. Well, it just didn't happen magically. There was a concerted effort in economic development, which since this council started. economic development, which since this council started, I haven't seen a thing. We're gonna-- Mrs. Misselli is hosting a forum with the Chamber and the Town. Thank God. We used to wholesome regularly. We haven't seen one in almost two years. There's been no focus on it. We sat, and I can't obviously disclose it, but we sat in a meeting with our Economic Development Coordinator, begging us to take action on some stuff related to economic development that I can't talk about. And the reaction in the room that night was, oh my God, it's so late, we gotta get going. This is just-- we can't deal with this right now. And it's never been brought up since. If this council wants to pass on true tax savings to the taxpayers of this community, then we better get our butts in gear on economic development, in serious economic development. Not Lou Perillo coming here every six weeks and rattling off stuff that his office is doing. We're doing nothing. We're not pushing it. We're not pushing it the way it's been pushed over the last several years. We're not. I've been waiting. I've kept my mouth shut, and I've been waiting. And so now we sit here, and we get hocus-pocus, you know, magically pull revenue from investment accounts that are fixed? How do we do that?
Okay--
With an honest face. I told you before, I'm really trying not to laugh. With an honest face to the taxpayers. Because of what? It's an election year? So we all look like heroes? This is crazy.
Completely disagree. We most certainly have put an emphasis on economic development. Mr. Ricchio, I gave you a seat at your request on the seat commission, and I don't think you've attended one meeting since this term has taken place. So don't sit here and make it seem like we're doing nothing and you're doing everything for economic development.
When are we gonna have those things that were initiated by Lou Perillo back on our agenda? He told us there's no revenue. I mean, there's no inventory in industrial lots in this community, and he was begging us to take action on a couple of things, and we did nothing.
We asked Lou to move forward, and you know what? First of all, it's executive session, as the Vice Chair said.
I didn't divulge anything.
And second of all, that's not what's before us right now.
No, I'm asking you--
Discuss economic development at a later time.
We're talking about revenue.
That's right.
That's before us.
We have a motion before us. So is there any other discussion related to the motion? Mr. Lombardi, and then Ms. Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to Councilman Barry's motion here, let's be clear, and we can have the Finance Director explain it, but this is not any savings. This is nothing more than a timing issue of whether we're going to recognize the delta either in the current year or the upcoming year. So I do appreciate Councilman Barry's motion, and I will vote yes on it, but I want-- I'll ask through the chair for the Finance Director, current year, 2019 budget, we budgeted $650,000 of interest on investments. Looks like we're going to land somewhere around 1.1 million. That $500,000 change is going to flow where? I just want you to explain to the public that we're not making or losing any money by Mr. Barry's motion. We're just recognizing it before the year starts as opposed to when the year ends. So can you explain where the $600,000 increase in this year's budget ends up?
Any excess revenue that we receive will either be utilized for a purpose, or it will be-- go back to the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
It'll roll back to the fund balance.
Which benefits the taxpayers in this coming budget.
In a future year.
Right.
Just a question to be clear, because I don't know the answer. So what if we don't get to 1.1, then what happens?
Well, we basically budget all line items. Some of them-- the one thing you could be assured is that we don't get the exact number. It'll either be slightly over, slightly under, but I'm pretty confident that it'll be very close to that 1.1 million.
So assuming it's 1.1 or over, then we appropriately tax the taxpayer. If it's 1.1 or under, then hopefully we find it from somewhere else.
It'd be another revenue source.
Another revenue source. Got it.
What might that revenue source be?
It could be anything. Count clerk's fees. It could be tax revenue. We've got better than our 98% collection rate. It could be anything like that. We have a-- like I said, we have a large amount of revenue line items. It could be, we get-- this will make you laugh, but we get more money from the state than we expect. That's also a revenue line item.
I'm just, I guess, I'll let the motion go, but I'm surprised that this money that we just found made it through the Town Manager, the Finance Department Director, and all however many members of the Board of Finance. Like, this is a miracle. I'm so excited.
Go ahead, Mr. Lombardi.
To Mr. Ricchio's point, we did-- the Town Manager did increase it by 350,000 this year. So I don't know when that changed. Was that this year that you bumped it up, or was it-- so it looks like there was a--
It was, yeah, in fiscal year 18-- excuse me, fiscal year, last fiscal year, I had, I think, 600-something thousand.
650, yeah.
I bumped it up. So I was already expecting to get more.
Right.
What you're asking is, are we comfortable in adding an extra $100,000 to that? And that's when we go through our financial drain trust, and we looked at it and said, yes, of all the revenue lines, we're the most confident that that's the one that we can pick up the extra money.
And again, as I pointed out earlier, it's, I don't know, when was this budget printed?
January.
It was March 20-- it was approved March 29th.
No, no, no. When was this budget printed?
My budget was February 25th or something.
All right.
The Board of Finance after that.
Board of Finance, March 20--
So let's say March.
March, the end of March.
So as of March, the year-to-date actual is almost already at that mark, and we're not even through with the fiscal year. It's 1,095,825, and that was in March. So again, Mark already raised it to a million. This would just get closer to the actual amount that is projected.
Sorry.
That's okay.
One more question, again, for the Finance Director. If we circle back to the building-- this building discussion.
Yes.
If the council decides to pay cash of 2.9 million--
Yes.
That cash will be-- will come out of the rainy day-- the rainy day fund.
On the fund balance, yes.
That may have a negative impact on interest. Was that factored into the analysis?
That won't occur this fiscal-- this coming fiscal year. We'd only have to pay it for the following year.
So it was--
It would be fiscal year 2021 when we would pay, when we would need to make the payment.
Okay.
Not 2020.
This is for the next meeting, obviously, but just briefly, our option is to purchase September of 2020. We go to referendum in November of 19, so that we have the authority and the money available to us to do a closing in September of 2020. So it doesn't affect any rental payments by the Town or the BOE in the fiscal year we're entering.
Okay. But to my point, maybe in next year's budget, we have to take a look at that, because we'll be-- if the council decides, we'll be losing $3 million of liquidity.
That's a point well taken.
Right.
So for next year, when we look at the 2021 budget, we can certainly look at that. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Deedick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
No.
Triano?
No, I won't support.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Okay, any other motions?
Okay, so I guess I'm up. We are reducing the self-insurance contribution from the Town side, and I don't have my notes in front of me. I was not at the last meeting, I mean, at the last discussion on this. $48,000 on the Town side.
We have a motion to reduce the self-insurance contribution by 48,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Open for discussion.
Mr. Poulis?
No, I-- go ahead.
Self-insurance meeting, the last meeting?
Sure. I can just-- I have the minutes here from the meeting, from the discussion that ensued. Paragraphs five and six of item three. I'll just read them verbatim. It says, "The Town Council Chairman asked the Self-Insurance Committee to review the updated budget projection and recommend the appropriate level of funding. The committee decided to focus on what is the proper level of funding for fiscal year 2019, 2020, based on the best information available at this time, and decided to take no action on the budget. Their determination was that the 24 million previously recommended was the appropriate funding level. The committee also discussed that the self-insurance fund balance is adequately reserved, and they would not object to the Town Council reducing the budget to 23.8 million for two reasons. If-- one, if the Self-Insurance Committee were not being so conservative, they would have approved the budget at the February recommendation for 23.8 million. And two, there is an indication that the April claims are bringing the budget estimate back to 23.8 million." This was the information that was discussed at the Self-Insurance meeting.
For many months.
So just again, to refresh everyone's memory and the public's memory, we changed actually the policy last year so that we could do this a little bit closer to the budget cycle and be more accurate with our estimates. So the meeting was requested as the change mandated, and we did receive more accurate information. In addition to that, talking to the Finance Director, looking at the claims on the Town side, certainly we're in line with this type of change in the self-insurance budget. It's more accurately represents the projections. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Deedick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously, I think. Excellent. Okay, are there any other motions for the Town of Southington budget? Are there any other motions for the Town of Southington budget? Okay, I'll give the Finance Director a minute to calculate the amount of budget, the amount of-- the total budget before us.
There were 685,603 reduced from the general fund side. I'm sorry, from the general government side, making the new number 54,163,501. But that was reduced because the Recreation Department has already approved for 300--
We didn't approve it yet, but we--
Separated yet, so don't take--
Right. So I'm going to subtract that out, 348,864, so that you'd approve the 53,814,637.
And just for clarification--
Say it one more time?
Increase revenue.
One more time?
53--
53,814,637.
It's the general government minus recreation.
Right.
And where does the $100,000 that we just talked about come in?
That's in the revenue section. So that's done-- you've already approved it for the revenue purposes.
Because of the motion?
The motion is all we need for revenue changes.
Revenue side. We're just doing the expense side. You just did the revenue side.
Okay, just to make sure everyone's clear with that. So this vote will not include that revenue portion. It's already approved.
Just the expenditure. You're approving the expenditure budget for the general government.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the amount as given by the Finance Director. This is for the general government budget.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion to approve that number that was presented by the Finance Director.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Is it appropriate before the vote on the--
Before--
You could do it either way, because you separated it. So you have a general government less the recreation budget.
Why don't we just vote on the recreation budget, so we know what we're voting on in total?
That's fine. Okay, I'll remove my motion.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the Recreation Department budget.
Make a motion to approve the Recreation Department budget at 348,864.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
No.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Deedick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
I recuse myself from this vote.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
Abstain. Okay, so that passes, seven with two abstentions. Seven to zero with two extensions. So now we have before us the total amount for the Town budget. Can you give us the total amount now?
Including the recreation.
Including the recreation. Okay, so now, looking for a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve with the Recreation Department money included, 54,163,501 for the general government budget for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Deedick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Abstain.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulis?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Paul Mary?
Abstain. Okay, so the motion passes, and we have a budget before us. Great. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask for five minutes, Mr. Chairman, if we could take a break.
Sure. We're in recess for five minutes. The agenda is the Board of Education budget. So the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allocate 98,877,000 dollars to the Board of Education, which represents the amount budgeted by the Board of Finance with a 152,000 reduction to the Board of Education portion of the self-insurance budget.
Say that number again?
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Mr. Poulis, can you just explain a little bit further your motion?
Sure. So the council just voted unanimously to reduce the Town side of the self-insurance funding by 48,000. As you know, there's a split between the Town side and the Board of Education side based on the number of participants. So essentially, we're reducing self-insurance by 200,000, which is what the minutes said was the council could vote on. And-- I'm sorry? Oh, okay. And so this reduction is just the corresponding portion to the Board of Ed, but it's essentially the-- since the Board of Ed doesn't need that money because it's been reduced, they would be getting the budgeted money for what the Board of Finance deemed appropriate for the Board of Education budget.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Lombardi.
So for all-- yeah, this is the Board of Finance budget--
Correct.
--outside of what we--
Correct.
It's not a reduction of the Board of Finance budget.
No, it's not. We essentially don't have to pay the 150-- we don't have to budget for the 152,000 because the self-insurance has been reduced.
Right.
So they don't have that expense.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilwoman Morrissey?
So I just have a couple of things I want to say, and I wrote them down, so I didn't mess up. So we are busy working, carting children to activities, caring for relatives and family. We donate time, energy, and money to things we support. We manage more and more, sometimes because we have to, sometimes because we want to. We become efficient and effective. I am disappointed in the Board of Ed and the District Administration. As I continue to hear, we have to cut services. We're below level services, or consider the per pupil spending rate. I'm disappointed specifically because, for example, the district implemented a new attendance software at the high school, but it didn't reduce the number of secretaries. The district eliminated a position, and instead of repurposing the salary, they have already handed out significant raises to individuals who take on some of that work. The district has yet to offer cutting stipends, or car allowances, or even retirement gifts. It would be refreshing to hear about budget items and initiatives that show the district being efficient. I, as a council member, cannot tell the District I, as a council member, cannot tell the district administration or the Board of Ed what to do. I cannot dictate what they spend funds on. I simply approve a number. I can only urge the district administration and the Board of Ed to get creative, to look at issues from a different angle. Teachers are writing grants to fund their professional development and are being honored and rewarded. I urge you to do the same. Show the town you are being resourceful and I believe then you will be rewarded. The superintendent was quoted in The Observer saying that if we do not continue to invest, the education system will be irreparably damaged. I believe we, as a community, do invest in the education system. Our cost per student is significantly above the national average. I believe a good education is a necessary pillar of ensuring our youth becoming contributed members, contributing members of society and not a drain on the economy. After all, they will be the ones supporting the Board of Ed in the future. And with a 24% growth over the past 10 years, those students are in for a significant financial burden if the trend continues. I think it would be a good suggestion that the superintendent and the administration provide the Board of Ed with a monthly budget comparison to show financial trending and appropriate expenditures as outlined and compared to the budget. This would provide the Board of Ed the opportunity to review any variances and take appropriate action prior to budget season.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Vice Chairman, Misselli?
Well, probably going to be my second unpopular statement of the night. I have to also state publicly that I was disappointed from the start with the Board of Education budget. I do feel like our town manager stayed within the parameters that the Finance Board had asked of him, but the Board of Ed coming in at nearly 5% increase, I don't feel exhibited the same example. Exorbitant raises in salaries like Mrs. Morrissey just mentioned, they're just one example of spending initiatives that I just cannot support. I also did not appreciate the messaging, the overall messaging, that increased spending is required this year because we haven't, quote, "properly funded" our schools over the past several years. In fact, I believe that with all the hullabaloo last year with regard to the uncertainty from the state, that the Board of Ed ultimately was just about fully funded, if I remember correctly. I also want to remind everyone here tonight of Mr. Ricchio's statements after we passed the Board of Ed budget last year. He noted that we needed to change the paradigm, that's my, I don't know if you use that word, but I'm using that word tonight. He said we need to change the paradigm for our education spending. He spoke of possibly hiring a consultant to look at the Board of Ed's total spending plan, and several of us nodded our heads in agreement because we all knew that something needed to change. Mr. Dietzick also made some statements. I went back and looked at the minutes. In my opinion, not much has changed, and as such, I cannot support the Board of Ed budget as it currently stands this evening. For two years now or more, we've talked about the fiscal crisis that the state of Connecticut is in, we need to make tough choices, this is one of them. You know, I went through this Board of Ed budget line by line, but unfortunately, like Mrs. Morrissey said, we can't go line by line. All we can do is approve a lump sum, so I too, well, I don't know how you're going to be voting, but I'm going to be voting against the budget this evening. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Dietzick?
I'm going to support the budget. It's easily the most frustrating vote that I sit and take. I don't blame anyone who sits on the Board of Education, I don't blame anyone in that person. It's not in the room, but a 10%, or 24% growth over 10 years is just not sustainable. We continue to pick up unfunded liabilities from the state. Something has to change. I would support a cut, but I can't take the risk on a personal level that the cut's going to get taken out on a program for the kids or for, I can't. That's why it's the most frustrating vote. I truly feel like my hands are tied and it's just, talking as a taxpayer, I don't know where we're going to be in 10 more years. If our asset base doesn't increase and the state continues to go, I do not understand what our education system has, how it's going to be funded. So I'm going to support it, but very frustratingly.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Berry?
No.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
No.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, the Board of Education budget is approved. Moving on to the sewer fund. Need a motion for the sewer fund?
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the sewer fund at 5,549,600 dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the sewer fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Berry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, the sewer fund is approved. Animal Control Fund, looking for a motion?
Make the motion to approve the Animal Control Fund at 250,400 dollars.
Okay, we have a motion for the Animal Control Fund. And we have a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Berry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, that is approved. And finally, I'm looking for a motion to approve the five-year capital improvement plan.
You're only approving year one, obviously, Mr. Chairman.
Year one, sorry, and the capital improvement plan.
Make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan of 34,538,654 dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morrissey. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Yes. Oh, sorry, discussion.
Yeah. Can we talk about if the differences here with the cash funding on, because this building is listed as bonding? If we vote yes on that, what implications does it have? If we vote no? So let's just make sure we understand what we're doing here.
The capital plan you're voting on, if I may, the capital plan, what you're voting on are the projects themselves. They have to come back to you and we have funding for the projects. So in this particular case, at your next meeting, I'm going to be introducing a bond ordinance which requires a referendum for the purchase of this building. As we go through the process, as I'm sure you're aware, you first vote whether you want to send it to the Board of Finance and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It goes to them, they then give their recommendation back to you after a public hearing on the Board of Finance and a regular meeting at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Then it comes back to you. You will then make a decision with the recommendation of the Board of, excuse me, of the Board of Finance on how you want to move forward with it. Either way, I need a referendum. So in this particular case, it's going to be up to you how you want to fund that with the recommendation of the Board of Finance.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, not related to this motion, but I did make a request of town staff at our last meeting regarding capital projects. I did receive the three-year history that I want, that I wanted, and I will share with the council. I didn't make copies tonight, but maybe at our next meeting, I'll hand it out so that other people are aware of what I asked for and what I received. I know specifically Councilwoman Misselli and Berry, we've had some discussions at the Public Works meeting, so I will have copies for, I guess I'll just make copies for all of us at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And thank you, Amelia, and Mark for pulling that.
I'll see Amelia.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Berry?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Misselli?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Poulos?
Yes.
Ricchio?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes. Okay, we have now completed our budget, which will now turn it back over to the Board of Finance. So can I ask the Finance Director, we began the evening at a .39 mil rate increase, where are we at right now with the changes that we made?
We're at .16. .16.
So, again, for residents, that will result in the Board of Finance will obviously take action on this, but we're handing them back the way it looks right now. Instead of a .39 mil rate increase, it would be a .16 mil rate increase for our residents.
Yes.
Okay?
Like the lowest. It's like the lowest.
All right, we are moving on to report of special committees. Open Space didn't officially meet, however, the Heritage Identity Committee, kind of a spinoff of Open Space, Matt. So, Vice Chairman, Misselli?
We had a good first meeting. We talked about the spaces, places, and structures in our community that have historical significance. We spoke about our mission statement, Bonnie Plord. One of our committee members is currently working on that mission statement. It will be crafted over the next couple of weeks. We also talked about goals and objectives for our committee, and I think the consensus has been to select a couple of properties to recommend for the National Register of Historic Places, to raise awareness in our community about, again, those spaces, places, and structures that have historical significance and what that truly means. So, lots to do and we're just starting. That's it. We also determined our regular schedule for the remainder of the year, and I forwarded that to the town clerk so that that can all be posted on the website.
Okay. Any questions for the Heritage Identity Committee through Open Space? Okay, so moving on to self-insurance, we kind of already had to do it with the budget, but I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Poulos.
Sure, Self-Insurance Committee met on May 7th. In addition to what I reported about discussing what the self-insurance budget funding level should be, I've already given enough info on that. Some more specifics, claims for March were 113 under budget, claims for April were essentially on budget, which was viewed as a positive. Typically, in April, May, and June, we're over budget because most people, most of the participants meet their deductibles by that time. To date, we're $571,000 under budget with two months left.
Okay. Any questions for self-insurance? Pretty routine. Okay, moving on, Apple Harvest Festival Committee, ours was a pretty routine meeting as well. We approved a couple contracts. Pleased to say Coca-Cola will be returning as our beverage sponsor, and we approved a new company, Two Owls, for our grounds cleaning RFP. Other than that, we just continued with the sponsor update. So far, commitments to date total 51,000, and paid to date is $24,900 for sponsorships. Any questions about the Apple Harvest Festival Committee? Okay, so moving on to the Town Managers' Report, National Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second time you're seeing this. There were some questions on the dam part of the...
The what part?
They had the part that had to do with the dams, and Mr. Phillips is here, and I believe he's, but looks like an engineer of some kind.
Yeah, I brought some backup. Rob Phillips, Director of Planning and Community Development, with me is Scott Bigginnati, Malone McBroom, who actually assisted with the plan, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan drafting and update, and he's here to answer some basic general questions if necessary. But what I did was, I know there was concern about Level C, with the status of a Level C dam and how it's managed, and I know that through my research, speaking with Chuck Lee from the DEEP, I was educated that the Level C dam actually has to have an emergency action plan. The ones that are owned by the Town of Southington or the Southington Water Department do have those EAPs. They also need to be completed because the town needs to insure these dams, and I've confirmed with the help of Amelia at Finance that we do have current insurance on these as well. There was a specific question about the Spring Lake Dam that's classified as a C dam and with 100-home subdivision that's downstream of it. Chuck Lee had indicated that sometimes dams may be classified a certain way, say it's a B or an A, and sometimes they may be upclassified to a C if development happens downstream. And in this case, he believes that the 100-lot subdivision, the houses that were built after the dam was in existence, has raised it to a Class C dam. The specifics on that specific dam, oh, going back to the comments in the report that said that there was a maintenance issue that had been identified by DEEP, and the DEEP and dam owner were reportedly working to address the issue, that happened to be simply that it needed a new inspection, an annual inspection or every two-year inspection, and the owner of the dam, which is Spring Lake Village, did actually have that inspection done, and it was reported, it was submitted to DEEP beginning of April, and with DEEP's workload, they haven't had a chance to digest that yet at this time. So that's what that was about. Recommendations of the last inspection report, basically the major thing was epoxy, the larger horizontal crack in the right spillway buttress, things of that nature. So that's really it. When he was looking at the report, Chuck Lee, that is, he said, you know, this really isn't a big concern, it's just classified Level C because of the development below the dam. So he doesn't have any concerns over it at this time. But if you have any other general questions, certainly Scott's here to answer those.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Sorry you had to sit through the whole budget for that.
I hope you enjoyed.
Sorry.
No, wasn't.
Okay, Town Manager, Hart Street Bridge Repair.
On behalf of the Public Works Committee and Mr. Hayden, recommending to you Martin Lovero, contractor out of Bristol, for the sum of $30,000, which is 100% refundable in a LOSE of grant. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Okay, moving on to the Town Attorneys' Report, FOI Decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, it's not a final decision yet. We did receive on April 29th a proposed findings from the hearing officer that conducted that hearing. They are recommending a dismissal of the complaint against the town based on the fact that the council chats were not considered meetings. There was no town, specific town meeting, town business being discussed, so they're recommending dismissal of that complaint. That is going to go before the full commission on May 22nd, next Wednesday, at which time the commission will either approve or deny that recommendation. So we should have an update at the next meeting that this is hopefully final, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm hoping that it's final, too. I think, I know, it was completely unfair to the council people that are involved in the chats, and it's just so frustrating because we're just trying to do our job, you know.
Mr. Ricchio?
This is a pattern with this newspaper. Is there an option or opportunity to file harassment claim with the police department against them or... Help us out here because this is, they don't do their homework, they're ignorant to the laws, and yet they drag people to Hartford out of work. Personal time, it's getting out of control. And in my personal opinion, they should drag the editor of The Observer, whoever owns that paper, into court and sue their butt because it's crazy.
I agree. I don't think it would fall within the purview of a criminal-type harassment situation. There is provisions under the Freedom of Information Act that overly harassing complainants can be subject to certain penalties by the FOI Commission, but as I discussed with representatives at FOI, they've had much worse situations where people are, the same person might be filing hundreds of complaints in a year, and that's the only time they've ever actually invoked that sort of penalty or tried to. So we have two similar complaints here with the community chats, and Attorney Sheffey is going to ask that pending the commission adopting this finding, that it would automatically be applied to the second complaint that was filed. And I believe that would put that to rest.
So the only thing that I would argue in this scenario, this isn't somebody in the Joshmoe public, right? This is somebody who has the ability to plaster this on the front page of every newspaper in their circulation, which is completely different. And the only chance the average person has to do that now is obviously with social media, which they didn't have before. But I think that's an unfair advantage for someone who has a political, an obvious political agenda, whatever it is, I'm not going to surmise what that is, but an obvious political agenda, to use their advantage to slander good public servants in our community. Quite frankly, I'm tired of it. I don't care what side of the alley they sit on, we're all friends here. It's crazy. aisle they sit on, we're all friends here. It's crazy. I want something done about it. So I would make a motion that the chairman do what he needs to do to get a letter through your office that goes to the FOI Commission and registers this complaint as a harassing complaint.
Okay, we have a motion. First of all, is there a second, and then when we can have discussion?
I'd second.
Okay, so we have a second. First of all, I, I think I speak on behalf of both of us. We appreciate the support, really. I just don't know if legally, especially without the final ruling from FOI, if, if that's prudent at this time.
Right.
I mean, maybe we delay and at least wait till we hear...
Sounds like we're getting it, so I would amend my motion to say at the appropriate time, if we get it.
I...
Or we can bring it up at that time.
Okay, I appreciate the comments of my colleague, and I just think that's a slippery slope, because there's the freedom of the press, and there's a lot of editorials I have read in many newspapers that I absolutely didn't agree with, and some I thought did cross the line. And I think on the issue that affected both the chair and the vice chair was not warranted, I said that publicly, that I thought that was a rather petty way to go about talking about someone's council chats as some freedom of information violation. So I agree with you in concept that, yes, that was, in my opinion, a frivolous complaint, but obviously, the person thought it wasn't, and that's why we have a commission that would fairly oversee it, and they certainly came back with a recommendation that it was not a violation of FOI. I just don't want to stand here as a councilman and tie the hands of editors or newspaper people that, in their editorial department, might have an opinion that could be rather wrong in our opinion, but that's their job as newspaper editors, to have opinions and write editorials and do what they do. So I understand what you're saying, and I think I just wouldn't want to go down that road officially as a council in terms of a letter and any type of motion. It's just my gut feeling.
Just for a little bit more context, I think more effectively, I kind of agree with both of you guys. I say wait for a final judgment, and then when we have, or the final decision, then when we have that, you know, that kind of clears up that Meriden case it's incite to. So now we kind of know their hand. And then, you know, send it to their legal department, we have it, and say, here you go, you know, and close, please find a decision. And then if they do it again, then maybe we do it, but maybe a little...
Are you all right with that, Mike, if we...
Well, yeah, listen, I want to get on the floor of discussion, and I appreciate what John says, but this isn't an editorial, it's risen to the level of harassment. So an editorial is one thing, we've all been nailed by editorials from that place, that, whatever, newspaper, be nice tonight. But an editorial is one thing, but when they continually drag people before a commission for no reason, and they know it's no reason, I know that they know, that's harassment, in my opinion. I think it's different than an editorial, but I appreciate your comments.
No, I mean, if they knew, and they're doing it to harass, then that's a, that's a different issue. I mean, I don't know if they knew, but if you're saying they knew, I mean, it's pretty bad. They're just, that is harassment, but...
So are you, are you both motioning second?
No, I think that's wise.
Okay, with holding off?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
John, I think that's fine. And the other thing is, you know, when we finally get the final dismissal of it, that perhaps it gives us opportunity to talk to them, too. I don't want to not, I would like, I like process, and I, and I think, under the circumstances, you know, that we can explain, if there's a question about what we do, or how we do it, or why we do it, you know, we can certainly explain it and talk, but...
So Attorney Fund, do we have any indication when FOI is going to close?
May 22nd.
May 22nd, and that's it? There's nothing more after that point?
It could be appealed to the Superior Court after that, but that's the final...
Okay. So if you're all right, we can maybe get an update at the next meeting and...
Perfect.
Wrap it up. Okay. All right. Anything else for the Town Attorney?
No, thank you.
Okay. So the microphone is open, it's public communication, so please feel free, any resident, we'd ask you to leave comments to five minutes, and start by stating your name and address. The microphone is now open.
Hello.
Hello.
350 Woodruff Street, Company One Fire Department, a volunteer member. I just sat through here, listened to you guys talk about the budgets, and, you know, it's great, it's your job, not mine, that's all for that. Has there been any requests on the volunteer side for recruitment and retention, money set aside for that effort on our part to... That's, that's the only, the only comment I have. Has there any been, any, anything written down to have money set aside for those efforts?
So what I'd encourage you to do, this, this really isn't the proper venue, however, I can tell you through all the discussions that I've had, I know Councilwoman Morrissey, and I think many members of the council, we absolutely support the volunteers and have tried talking to the chief, and I know the chief values the volunteers and the contributions they make, so I'd encourage you to reach out directly to the chief, and he can share with you what's been done. Also, the Fire Commission Chairman, we...
I, I am part of the Recruitment Committee at the Fire Department, so there's a reason why I'm here.
Okay.
Because we don't have a budget for that, for that committee. So again, I mean, I'm here to speak my mind.
Right, no, no, okay.
It's going to be taken for that. And again, I heard that we're approving two firefighters, which is, that's, that's what it is, but I just wanted to ask a question specifically for the recruitment and retention part of the volunteer side.
Okay.
That's, that's all. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question of you? You said you were on the committee for retention and recruitment?
Oh, for the recruitment.
For the recruitment.
Yeah.
As part of that committee, was there a specific budget number that you put forth to the chief that, that you can let us know what that is?
No.
There was not, so there was not a formal requesting, I need $5,000.
The only thing we asked was, or specifically was, what is our budget? And we never got an answer.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Fischello.
My name is Celia Fischello, Eddie Two, Autun Avenue. I invite the whole council to come up where I live and see my backyard. General speak to someone that think they're expert on the land. And you look yourself, I have to pay tax where it is, anytime. What I saw, there are 39 mil on the, so I gotta get my purse, see. I wanted to know, I had this to grass in the tunnel hall, and like this, and I was accused I was carrying gun. Anyway. Every two years here you got a budget. When I started my social security, lady Eddie, was about $580, $50. Today it's about...
I know.
$1,200. Now, I want, now that you know, somebody is new that's like, come here, go along with it, first of all, because we talk about the law, I'm not talking about myself.
Mr. Fischello, if you don't mind, we can pass this out, and I need you to speak into the microphone. All I'm asking you to do is speak into the microphone, Mr. Fischello.
Here it is. And your lawyer, too, you say you've, that I never had, look, you lie off as I done. I'm a citizen in this country, and I work for it, too.
I'm not telling you can't speak. I'm asking you to speak at the microphone, just so that residents at home can hear you. That's all. Okay, thank you.
You always talk, you know everything, and then you ask a lawyer.
Thank you.
The question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I go through 40 years, and there's a town...
Thank you.
Nah. You do the budget tonight, all right? I tell you make the money.
Mr. Fischello, we, we can hand these out for you.
I really know, and listen, you are somebody else. I just, that's it. Bring me the car to go. You're expert. You come and tell the people what to do in this little property, a little one. You don't touch the, you don't touch the, you don't touch the poison item. It's up to you because you think I was too, you know. Look what I say here. You and I are a strict American people that private the sector.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fischello.
Mr. Fischello, nothing.
Thank you, we give you five minutes. You have every right to speak in your five minutes, but that's all.
Five minutes, I'll give this a...
Mr. Fischello, your time is up. I'd like to open the microphone up if there's any other resident that would like to speak. Is there any other resident that would like to speak? Last call? Mr. Fischello, I'm going to continue the meeting, I'm closing public communication. Mr. Fischello, I'm going to close public communication. I need to ask you, Mr. Fischello, we're closing public communication.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on the action resolution for the National, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ricchio, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? The motion from Mr. Ricchio is to approve the national, the resol, Mr. Fischello, you're out of order, we are moving on with our meeting. Mr. Fischello. Mr. Fischello, you are out of order, we're moving on with the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ricchio. Mr. Fischello. Mr. Fischello, you're out of order, and we're moving on with the meeting. So, Mr. Ricchio made a motion to approve the resolution for the National Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we have a second?
Okay, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from Vice Chair Misselli. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that, that passes. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion on the Hart Street Bridge Repair.
Okay, we have a motion on the Hart Street Bridge Repair to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just, I'm just going to say, just in case it has to come up, Martin Laverro, contractor, says some of $30,000.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Tax refunds, Mr. Dietzick?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds itemized in the Town Council Packet.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as itemized in our Town Council Packet. Is there a second?
Second.
We, great, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, appointment, manager appointment, Conservation Commission?
I wrote a, I wrote everybody, everyone, registrar, like immigrant that don't like this.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have the name of Jessica Christiante of Bristol Street. She will now be a member of the Conservation Commission as an alternate.
Great. We, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. There's no vote on those, it's your appointment. Okay, moving on.
Wait, Kelly has something.
Vice, do you mind if I, okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Morrissey?
I just want to put on the record for the volunteer firefighter that was here, in the budget, under program supplies, under the Fire Department, there is a line within that program supplies for $2,000 for recruitment and retention. The chief and Chief Paul are here. If you could please make sure that the volunteer group, especially that individual in particular, knows that they do have $2,000, and we encourage them to spend every penny of that on recruitment and retention.
Okay, thank you very much. And finally, before we adjourn, just a reminder, our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 28th, due to Memorial Day, not on Monday. So now, Mr. Ricchio, looking for your motion? Mr. Ricchio? Looking for your motion?
I'm already adjourned.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.